We call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Tebbon, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, please help guide us as we do the business of the city this evening and help us to make decisions that are in the best interest of all those who represent. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lo.
Here.
Mr. Kevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
We need to add a few people to the privilege of the floor, Douglas Plogger, Bruce Talbert, and Lonnie Hobson, and also add ordinances 205-15 through 211-15 for community development.
Second. The motion in the second is to amend tonight's agenda under privilege of the floor by adding Douglas Plogger, Bruce Talbert, Lonnie Hobson, and adding, under ordinances, ordinances 205-15 through 211-15. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Privilege of the floor, Mary Fisher regarding neighborhood concerns. Mrs. Fisher, are you here? Okay, next is Douglas Plogger. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Rules of council allow for three minutes.
My name's Douglas Plogger. I live at 1110 East Market Street. I was involved in an incident back on June 27th by 11:30 PM. Officer Matt Boss knocked on my door and said that he backed into my truck. Well, in the process of speaking to him, he said he was in a neighborhood chasing fireworks. So, came out, looked at the damage. He pushed my foot, at least a foot and a half, back into the wife's truck. Well, when I got the police report, which would be like three days later, he said that he was in a line of fire. He was chasing gunshots in the neighborhood. So, my insurance had to pick up, basically, the whole claim. And then, we went through a little committee downtown here, and they denied paying a deductible also. So, I was just kind of figuring, you know, I should at least get my deductible back. And they kind of got scot-free, I mean, for not being able to drive. Yeah, it wasn't too bad until, yeah, we was talking on the road, and he said that two weeks prior to that, he also wrecked a Dodge Charger pretty bad. I guess he pretty much totaled that thing out. So, I just don't feel my responsibility is the whole claim. So, just kind of looking to get the five hundred dollar deductible back. That's it.
Okay. By way of explanation, Mr. Plogger, it's my understanding that that claim will be referred to a committee of council for consideration as a moral obligation. We will have the clerk notify you of when that meeting is set.
All right.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, under privilege of the floor is Bruce Talbert. Bruce Talbert. Okay, and next is Lonnie Hobson. It's Mr. Hobson here. See them, okay. Next is the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tebbon.
I move that item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and item B be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A and to receive and file item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number one receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From Judge Workman requesting legislation to purchase goods and services.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tebbon.
I move that communication number two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Deputy Law Director requesting legislation for amendments to section 436.06 of the codified ordinance.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that communication number three be received and filed.
Second.
Could, yeah, could you authorize the legislation in your motion?
Okay, and I authorize legislation to be done by the law department.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From Chief Martin regarding liquor permits.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number four be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Auditor regarding disposal of surplus on GovDeals.com.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tebbon.
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a stock transfer to Who Bodies Inc. at 2295 North Pole Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number six be received and filed, and the clerk authorized to file with no objection.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to transfer ownership of a vehicle to the Allen County Sheriff's Department.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed, and legislation's on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Dan's Office Furniture.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed, and legislation's on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into contracts for home projects.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number nine receive and file.
Second.
Motion in the second is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into contracts for CDB Jeep projects.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number 10 receive and file.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next is reports of officials, Mr. Rick Stahler, regarding the summer wrap-up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. It's great to be here. You know, we talked about the summer of 2015. I'm harking back to a quote I read one time that said, "Life was too short to worry about the next rainstorm. We'd be better off to spend our resources and our efforts learning to dance in the rain." And we did a lot of that this year. We did a lot of that. So, we'll start with our playground program. We had a terrific, terrific session this year, eight weeks, a little over 200 young adults, six to 12, working with us in the program. We had 17 very talented high school and college leaders this year. It was a tough decision to narrow it down to 17 leaders, but we were always looking for the best of the best. We had some great kids working with our youngsters this summer. Also, our partnership with the youth tennis program and LADA. They had over 130 youngsters out on the tennis courts at Collet working out. Our youth softball and baseball programs, we went through about 132 games. We had 76 teams participating in and around Lima. Our adult softball, 218 games that were played with over 34, 35 teams. At one time, because of the weather, we were actually 67 games behind that were rained out at one time or another. But Brett and his staff did a terrific job of getting those games rescheduled. Some nights were double headers, some were even triple headers. And we worked it out. It got done, and again, it was a terrific, terrific opportunity for, again, young adults and some of the older, over 50, league participated again this year, Diamond too, so, good summer. Pool was a very busy place, even with the rain. We found that some days it'd rain in the morning, and someone'd come out. We'd get enough rain that we'd cancel a ballgame, but the pool'd be able to get opened up, and we were good to go. So, we were pretty busy there this summer. The star span was spectacular. September edition, a little difficult because most of our seasonal help was gone in September. They'd gone back to school, so we had to rely on our staff to make that happen without any seasonal help, which was a challenge. Our dances in the park, Carolyn Dietrich over at Lincoln, another great opportunity for people to get out on Friday nights. She had a terrific lineup again this year, and we're looking forward to this coming spring. Again, we'll invite Carolyn out to use Lincoln Park East for their dances in the park on Friday nights. The Concert in the Park Series, Bart Mills, his group, about 3,000, over 3,000 folks on Sunday nights throughout the summer attended those at the pavilion. Of course, the Rally in the Square events that we host down here, we don't host, but our facilities are used. Then the annual toast to the city. Looking at our shelter reservations, we are pretty close to what we did last year. We'll know more. We usually wrap that up here in October, so we'll get those numbers. But we're on track to do what we did last year, maybe a little bit more, even in spite of the weather. Other folks using our facilities, again, an awful lot, of course, the Y with T-ball, soccer, and flag football. The high schools, Lima Senior and Lima Central Catholic with baseball, tennis, and cross-country. For those of you who may have had the opportunity to see the county cross-country meet last Tuesday over at Froat, every county, every school in the county came to Lima, and we got a lot of nice reviews and phone calls, a couple notes there, talking about just how great it was to be able to come into Lima and use that facility. This coming Saturday, the 17th, Lima Senior will actually be hosting the track, the Three Rivers Athletic Conference Cross Country Meet. So, we'll have teams from Toledo, Findlay, and the rest of the track coming to Lima, again, for that event this Saturday. So, we're looking forward to hosting that event as well. Of course, the Locos in their successful season as league champions this year averaged about 600 folks a game. Again, these are all terrific opportunities to bring people into our community. And if we don't have the facilities to make that happen, we just become someone else on the map. So, we're very, very pleased to be able to do that. While we're doing all those things, we're still charged with about 380 acres of land we have to maintain in our parks. There's an awful lot to get done, and this summer, you know, with the weather, it was a challenge, but we got there, and we couldn't pull all that together without a great staff. And our maintenance staff and our ball-diamond crew, of course, our Rangers, who do such a great job out working with the community and making sure all those things happen. So, you know, we also get some help from neighborhood associations, church groups, Eagle Scout Projects will come in and want to do some things. So, we're open to those things that can help, you know, make our parks and recreation sites a little more special for everybody. So, when someone asks you, "How do you run an outdoor program, you know, primarily based outdoors with young kids and with recreation, all the things you do," when you get, what, Mike told me, like 23, 24 inches of rain in about a three-to-four week period there at the end of June, first part of July, you do. You learn to dance, and you've got to be able to turn on a dime. You've got to be able to do those things that can make, you know, those things still go on as best you can. What's up next for us? We got youth basketball signups going on right now. We had last year about 70 teams involved, so we anticipate we'll be right around that number as well for this year. So, our boys and girls basketball program signups are going on now, and into the first part of November, we'll start that season in December and wrap it up in February. The last item I've got is to announce the Halloween date, which some of you may already know the thing, but, you know, I do got to tell you, I think it was about eight, maybe eight or nine years ago, city council, I think Mr. Tebbon challenged the administration, "Could you get this all in one night? Could you make that happen?" And we went out, and we worked with the townships, and to the T, each one of them has agreed over these past, like I say, eight or nine years to stay with us on that last Thursday of the month, and we're roughly 68. Everyone is 68, except for Perry Township. I think Perry is going to start a half hour earlier and end a half hour earlier. So, I think they're going 5:30, 7:30. But for the city of Lima, and again, you know, thanks to everyone for making that happen, we're going the last Thursday of the month from 6:00 to 8:00. So, this year, that translates to October 29th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM here in the city. Again, just want to remind folks, look out for kids that night. They're going to be running in and out of, you know, neighborhoods and yards and so forth, so please drive carefully through those neighborhoods. Adults, please help the kids stay together so you can keep track of them. And if you do want to participate in this event, please turn your porch light on, and that helps the kids and the parents know who's participating in trick-or-treat. So, that's it for us, for our wrap-up for this summer going into the fall, and we'll look forward to getting back to you with you about how the winter activities went next spring.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes, let's have a couple things there. First of all, it was some county folks that gave you a good commitment about the work you do for our parks, because they came out there, and some of them never visited our park before, and had an opportunity to talk to them. And also, I had an opportunity to meet in a city this past weekend, and was very, very happy how you go about, and you've got the smallest budget in the city, how you keep all this entertainment going in our city. And I tried to be Rick Stahler and say, "Hey, we've got some good folks that do donations, and you motivate companies that sponsor, and you just get it all thawed out, the same way you put together, make sure the locals had a good area with lighting. You went around and make sure them things was around, everybody signed it, turning the stuff, then to pay the money to do that." So, it's a lot of good things that you do on a small budget, and you make it happen. But some cities does not have all the recreation that we have in our city.
So, I hope I set the things right, though, because we do have some good sponsors in
our city.
We do.
That come out and help out.
It truly is. It truly is a team effort, and none of this happens without the help of council, without the administration's vision to help push this, you know, these efforts forward, and then giving us the resources to make it happen. So, again, you know, thank you for all that you guys do to make that work.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Lo.
Yeah, I just wanted to, Mr. Stahler, I had the privilege of playing with Simply Smooth in the Park One evening out there, and you're a Ranger. I wish I knew her name, a younger lady. Her professionalism was superb, and even though it was over before the sun went down, we was way out there tearing things down, 10:30, almost quarter after 11:00 at night, and she stayed there. And I just want to say hats off to her. I wish I could, I wish I knew her name, but I'll describe her afterwards. But she was a very, very, very kind lady.
Terrific.
So, I'll just let you know that.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
Thank you, Mr. Stahler. I'm going to ask council to support a motion to, I guess, revise our agenda and go back to privilege of the floor. I believe that Mr. Bruce Talbert has arrived. Is that, that's my motion. Could I get a second?
Second.
So, motion in the second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Talbert, if you could state your name and address for the record, and our rules allow for three minutes.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of the council for giving me this brief opportunity. My name is Bruce Talbert. I live at 1505 Cleveland Avenue, Lima, Ohio. I've been advised by council not to make any comment to city council in regards to the situation that I was coming with my concerns to speak with you about. So, hopefully here soon, I can come at you at a better time, when it's more better for me to speak with you and let you know not only my concerns, but a lot of concerns of people that I know. So, with all due respect, I thank you for giving me the opportunity, and I look forward to the next time that I can speak with you again.
Bring it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is ordinances, ordinance 215.
Loving Special Assessments for Property Maintenance Code Charges on Premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 215 be passed on its first reading. Second.
The motion in the second is that ordinance 215 be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tebbon.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Lo.
Yes. Ordinance 215 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 201-15.
Authorizing payment from various Lima Municipal Court funds for 2016.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tebbon.
I move that ordinance 201-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 201-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Tebbon.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Lo.
Yes. Ordinance 201-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 202-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of bulk fuel for 2016.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 202-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 202-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tebbon.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes. Ordinance 202-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 203-15.
Authorizing the mayor to transfer a 2,000 Ford Windstar to the Allen County Board of Commissioners for use by the Sheriff's Department.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 203-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 203-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tebbon.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes. Ordinance 203-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 204-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Dan's Office Furniture.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 204-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 204-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Tebbon.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Lo.
Yes. Ordinance 204-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 205-15.
To authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with New Lima Housing for the Future Inc. for housing maintenance training.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 205-15 be placed on a second reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to place ordinance 205-15 on a second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 206-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with New Lima Housing for the Future Inc. for administrative services under the city's housing program.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 206-15 be placed on a second reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to place ordinance 206-15 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 207-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lima Allen County Council on Community Affairs to provide loan closing services and down payment assistance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 207-15 be placed on a second reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to place ordinance 207-15 on second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 208-15.[1511.12] Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance two oh eight fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lima Allen Council on Community Affairs for housing counseling services.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance two oh eight fifteen be placed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to place ordinance two oh eight fifteen on its second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance two oh nine fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lima Allen Council on Community Affairs to provide fair housing services.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance two oh nine fifteen be placed on a second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to place ordinance two oh nine fifteen on second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance two oh ten fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Rhodes State College.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance two ten fifteen be placed on a second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to place ordinance two ten fifteen on second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance two eleven fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bradfield Community Center.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance two eleven fifteen be placed on a second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to place ordinance two eleven fifteen on second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Miscellaneous business, Mr. Tevin.
Just one thing this evening. I had a couple of calls concerning the lawn bags, and I had a conversation with Mike Caprano for the, with the leaves starting to fall. And the city, Mike, this week, I think you said, was switching to the larger-sized bags with the leaf cleanups beginning in people's yards. So, those are available now, and people can get those to help them with their cleanup efforts. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one item this evening. This Saturday, October seventeenth, from noon to two PM, Lima Police is having what they call a community day, and it's being held at the New Life Assembly Church at ten oh three East Kibbe Street. And it is to introduce the COP, Community Police Officer, to the community, and also for us to introduce ourselves to him. Along with this, area agencies and businesses are engaging in this activity, and they are Spheron, LACCA, Crime Victim Services, Spartan Health Clinic, Freedom Elementary School, Meat City, McDonald's, Allen County Sheriff's Office. There'll be a free lunch, job services on-site. You can speak with your local law enforcement, including your new community-oriented police officer. I'm very excited about this. I've been to the office there at the church. It's a separate entrance. He has hours on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Normally, when he would be in the office on Tuesdays, I believe it's from nine to noon, and on Thursday, it's from one to three. I visited him on Tuesday. Obviously, I knew that time. I have placed a call with him, and he returned my call, which is a good sign. He's been out going door-to-door, one doing surveys, also handing out and placing these flyers. And Chief, is there anything that I've overlooked? Okay. Very excited about it. I think the weather's gonna be a little cool, but it's gonna be dry. And really looking forward to everyone coming out and partaking in these services, opportunities, and to share fellowship. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn.
Yes, got a couple of things here. First of all, I'd like to thank the folks that helped out when we did the banned-a-box. And I know we did a lot of work in our state, the ones that helped out in the county. And we just seen that Senator Sher Brown proposed already that we're gonna ban the box on, and he filed a charge on any application. So, we did a lot of work on that, and it's not done yet, but the final draft will be out in a few weeks. So, we hoping that everybody continue buying into it, and right now, state of Ohio is buying into it right now, to give everybody the opportunity to get a job and give them opportunity. That's not gonna stop them checking on you, but you got an opportunity to let them know what's going on. Why did you get, had that found? But we're excited about that. And so many people who took part in that in Allen County, all around the state of Ohio. And we're so happy to see that on TV last night. Also, October twenty-fourth is our heroin walk at the Market of the King Park, and we are getting a lot of feedback on that from Middletown, Ohio, Dayton, Cincinnati. A lot of folks just wanna order shirts and donate to that, but we feel good about that. We so happy. We also got a group coming in from Solid Rock Church in Dayton. So, they wanna take part in it. So, and the people from Sumana wanna come down, take part in it. So, it's kinda great that we all trying to fight this war on this, and this is a heavy war. Heroin is a heavy, heavy thing on a lot of families right now. There's a lot of death happening in this, so we happy about that. We happy about the sponsors taking part in this, too. So, we appreciate all that. Also, we're getting some group of people together to help rake some of these leaves out, so when Mr. Allen give us the date, we won't be behind on the date this time, this year. I always said that we're gonna stay ahead of it, because soon as we set a date, some of the folks say, wow, we always first all the time. But we're gonna make sure we get these yards raked out, because some of these leaves been getting in the sewer ground, the area, and giving us the flooding and stuff. So, we're gonna make sure we got some people wanna help out with that. We got about fifteen, twenty volunteers, some of the older people who cannot get their yard raped, we gonna get it taken care of. Also, we wanna make sure that we help out the Salvation Army with the South Carolina people. We working on that next week. We got a lot of Ken folks, and some people got Ken folks. I got some calls, they got Ken folks in the South Carolina area. So, we're gonna try to work the Red Cross, getting water to them, and some of the needs they gonna need there in South Carolina. So, we wanna show our hometown pride on that. Also, we're gonna be having a meeting, an economic development meeting we're gonna have on the home, wait, let me make sure, the home housing department request proposal. We're gonna do this on Monday, October nineteenth, at five-thirty. You guys will be involved in that. So, we're gonna look over that proposal for that home development request.
Mr. Glenn, make sure that you refer that.
Oh, I gotta refer. I forgot it's not on.
To the committee?
Yeah. I'm referring this, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this home housing department request for proposal on Monday, October nineteenth, at five-thirty.
Motion, the second, is to refer the issue as described by Councilor Glenn to the Community Development, Community and Economic Development Committee.
Mm-hmm.
For discussion. Is there any discussion? Was there a second on that motion?
No.
Second.
Thank you. Motion, the second, is to refer the issue to the Department of Community Development Committee. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
It's Monday the nineteenth, at five-thirty. So, we'll be here on Monday, and we'll hear that project going on. Also, I'm so happy about the COP station. Everybody get out there to it, and the officer is getting around and trying to do surveys, and a lot of folks have to be giving good compliments, Ms. Adams, about that in your area. And it's great that we got an officer getting around, talking to the people, and asking what they want. So, there were some of the good signs that we got going on there, and it's great, fantastic. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mrs. Miles.
Thank you. I also wanna mention about the community-oriented policing station here. I was, I'm very, I wanna thank Officer Rhodey and Officer Garlart for reaching out to us for input on what we would like to see in regards to the community-oriented policing. I thought that was a nice gesture on their part to make sure that they're doing what, you know, what we would like to see them, see them do. So, I appreciate their effort in inviting us to come and talk with them. A very nice station, nice and cozy back there, and I look forward to him getting out in the neighborhood and talking with people and bridging that gap, you know, when it comes to relationships with our police officers in our neighborhoods. Lastly, the Westgate Neighborhood Association will meet October eighteenth at six-thirty PM. There will be a light meal served at six PM, and then the speaker, which will be someone from the Lima Fire Department, will speak at six-thirty. And the location is the Chamberlain Hickory Funeral Home on Cable Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to refer the issue of Mr. Plogger's damaged vehicle under moral obligation to the Safety Services Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
And second of all, already in committee, in the Safety Services Committee, I wanna call a meeting to, an informational meeting on the, for the Citizens Review Board on November second at six PM, and ask the clerk to notify Mr. Haynes, Judge Reed, and everybody involved with the city.
You're referring that to the.
No, it's already.
It's already been in committee.
Yeah, it's in committee.
It's already.
There's no further action, just call the meeting.
Okay. All right. And I'm gonna remind people to be good each other. And that'll be it.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President.